This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, September 26th. In the immortal words of the American philosopher Willie Nelson, we are on the road again.
Oh, gosh.
We are, uh, we are meeting here tonight at Council Rock. This is the first of our four school visits will take place during this school year. We'll be also visiting, obviously, French Road, uh, the high school and the middle school over the next few months. Very excited to be in Council Rock. School is in absolutely great shape and, uh, thankful that Principal Tappan would have us here for the evening. To begin with, um, I would, uh, ask if there's any desire for public participation tonight. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. You all have received, obviously, the agenda for tonight's meeting. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Susan.
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? Next, we'll have the approval of minutes from our last meeting, September 12th, business meeting. Um, you've had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any edits, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, motion to approve the minutes of the September 12th, the September 12th, 2023 business meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Okay, next up, we're gonna do the Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan update. Very excited about this. Lou Limo and John Novelli will be talking to us about what's going in our schools from a physical plan perspective.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share, um, some, uh, insight into what we're thinking about for the next phase of capital improvements here at Council Rock. Uh, tonight, Principal Tappan will be walking you through, um, what we've been thinking about. But first, we're gonna have our Director of Buildings and Grounds, John Novelli, uh, talk to some of the, uh, building condition survey items is how he's gonna refer to it. And that's the bricks and mortar, the core systems of the building, and what we need to be thinking about first and foremost, um, to make sure that our, um, our building is, uh, safe, efficient, uh, modernized, uh, as much as possible. So I'll invite, uh, Mr. Novelli to the podium, and then, uh, Mr. Tappan will talk to what we're thinking about, and then I'll finish up with a, a financial summary and some, uh, some things we're thinking about on the cost end.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, this phase, we're gonna concentrate on, uh, modernizing the existing classrooms. Uh, we got a little bit of a head start on them during the first, uh, phase of this project with new heating, air conditioning, and sprinkler systems. Um, these rooms are basically from 1957, and as you can see from the photos up on top, we have, um, a bunch of asbestos floor tiling, um, uh, which would need to be all abated. All the mastic would need to be taken up, and we would, uh, be changing it all over to, uh, VCT tile like we have in the new addition. Uh, the walls, um, you can see that they have the paneling and the old, uh, tile on it. It was also contain asbestos. The old chalkboards are still there that nobody uses anymore. So the, the thing for this would be to remove all of that stuff, abate it, uh, add drywall, um, use, uh, use whiteboards instead of the chalkboards, just to, uh, clean it up, uh, and give the teachers a, a nicer area to, to work in. All of the old, uh, built-ins that we have are, again, original. Those would all be removed. Those would also need abatement. Uh, those would be replaced with, uh, mobile units like we currently have in the new section. That'd make for, uh, more, more flexibility for the room for the teacher to be able to use it how that they would like. Uh, the bathrooms would also be updated. Currently, we can't, uh, get, uh, a wheelchair in any of these bathrooms, so we would have to look into creating a space in each wing that we could have, uh, handicap, uh, access to, uh, these bathrooms. Also, the efficiency of these old, uh, bathrooms is, uh, way outdated. The amount of water that they use compared to what we really could be using with the new section, uh, would definitely, uh, save us, uh, a bunch of money in the, in the long run. We would also be, uh, looking at, uh, replacing the lighting fixtures, um, all new doors and hardware, electrical. Uh, we're currently running, um, the old lighting system with, with, each one has a ballast in it which, uh, uses a lot of electric to do it. We would replace that all with, uh, all LED lighting, uh, to make it more energy efficient. We would bring more electric into the room as they currently, uh, don't have enough to, uh, uh, be able to work with, uh, all of today's technology. Um, so that's what we're looking to currently do in these classrooms now. We're not trying to mimic the new section, we just don't have the footprint to do that. Uh, but what we are trying to do is, uh, modernize it a little bit, make it a little bit, uh, more energy efficient, and give the, uh, teachers and kids a little bit more of a flexible space, uh, to, to learn in each day.
Just, um, one point, John, for people who maybe aren't, uh, as knowledgeable in construction. Those first couple of slides when you talked about the, um, asbestos tile and some of the mastic, those are all safely encased right now, but it's, so, we're good and safe in there now, but if we were to do some work, all of that has to be abated, as you point out. So I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, that's correct. So every six months, uh, through BOSI's, we are required to go through a, uh, systems check with our asbestos, um, and they're all safe. Again, the asbestos until it is actually disturbed and pulverized is not a threat to anybody, so, um, it's all safe, but it's something that we would, moving forward, like to remove so that it's not in our buildings.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what we're thinking. We're in the very preliminary stages, obviously, of, um, discussing, but really thinking, um, and the architects have had partners with us, uh, from SWVR, uh, thinking about the new space and what can we do in the existing spaces or the older spaces to try to bring, uh, bring about, um, some level of equity, um, to update. So one of the things that we have in the new space that is, uh, very popular, very, uh, sought after is our large motor space, uh, where students can use for indoor recess, for large motor area to, um, be moving around, to be building, um, and looking at how we might incorporate those into the existing wings. Um, John talked about the handicap accessible toilets. Really looking also at how can we creatively create some of those nooks and learning spaces, um, that our kids really gravitate towards, that we have built in to the new section. And then, you know, as we do that, the district made significant, um, you know, put time and money into the building of our chill beams and some things in our old classrooms, and how do we disturb that the least within that? And look to make some small learning community opportunities similar to what we have in the, uh, the new section, and also expand outdoor, um, and maximize our green space, and, um, really connect kids and classrooms out, um, to the outdoors. So these are just a couple of very preliminary. Uh, the blue sections are the three, um, existing wings, and looking at some creative ways to add the space, to transform the space. So we've got two different concepts here, um, that Lou will definitely talk about, um, kind of cost implications, and we're at the very, very early stages of thinking about what that could be, and, um, open to some other ideas as we move forward as well. I'll turn it back to Lou.
Thank you.
The one thing I, I just wanted to point out in, in this area here is you look at the number of classrooms that need to be touched for just those building condition survey items. And, you know, some of the areas that are in, uh, pink there and, um, the yellow in this plan anyway is new square footage. And part of the, the thought of, uh, building more, adding onto the building, is the fact that to touch any of these rooms, it's well beyond a 10-week construction season. So we really gotta be thoughtful and strategic about how we're gonna achieve all this work, given that there's no swing space in this building whatsoever. So, you know, just the abatement of, uh, the asbestos abatement, to be able to do flooring in any one room, is gonna likely take up a summer, and then to modernize that room and put new wall finishes and the lights and things like that, we're really gonna have to be thoughtful about a construction plan. So I wanna be upfront with the school community about that, that any work that's gonna be done, you know, we're gonna have to really do our best to mitigate that impact on program. This building went through three years of construction, and they were great, um, but to be able to continue to achieve improvements in the building, uh, will likely cause a disruption, disruption as well. So when we talk about costs, so just doing the building condition survey, the abatement, um, the finishes, the electrical systems, plumbing upgrades and things like that, that's $12.5 million right off the top to be able to, um, to address the, the core needs of the building and to modernize and update our rooms. What Matt was referring to, or Mr. Tappan was referring to as far as innovation and being able to equally provide innovation in each of the, um, other three wings, um, providing the nook space, providing additional, uh, large motor space, that's an additional $4 million on top of, of the $12.5 million. And then to add more square footage to build out even more, um, you know, collaborative space and, and different innovative type space, that's, would be $6.1 million more. And so just to put it in perspective, right now, our current building aid ratio is 81%. So just the BCS, again, the, the basic construction and, and modernization of the facilities, rehabilitation of the rooms, $12.5 million, we get 9.6 approximately in, in building aid, and then $2.9 million would be the local share. So as we're thinking about all capital projects throughout the district, we have a commitment to the taxpayers to reinvest, um, with that drop-off in the, in the tax cap and the reinvestment in our facilities, close to $38 million is what our opportunity for reinvestment is. So we just need the board to be, keep that in perspective, looking at the different buildings and what the, what those opportunity, um, investments are as we plan out, um, each of the four buildings and, and what our investment will be over these next several years. And how long we can leverage our capital reserves to, uh, to leverage that state aid, that 81% reimbursement over, you know, these next five, 10 years. That, any questions?
I, I think this is fairly obvious, but for anybody watching, the reason you noted a 10-week construction season is we would expect to do this during the summer, latter part of June, July, and August, when school's not in session. People can think of construction season as much longer. I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that.
That's a 10 weeks. That's our typical school construction season, um, but the scope of work that we're talking about, uh, you know, the needs of the buildings would certainly extend beyond that, um, and into the school year for sure.
I just wanted to, uh, remark, first of all, you've done an incredible job leading this, Lou, John, Matt, thank you. And John, I won't say this every time, I promise to embarrass you, but you're in a different role than you were a year ago, and you're killing it. It's fantastic, and we love, love your leadership of this, so thank you. When we did the project here, so, you know, I realized maybe not a lot of people would, uh, tune into this or might remember this, but people may be wondering, well, you just did all this work here in this space. It seems like to many people, you just did this. Um, we're actually, you know, a bunch of years into this now, and when we did that and we first had the debate in this district about doing work at Brookside or doing it here and land it here and, uh, added full-day kindergarten, et cetera, we always introduced the concept that we'd have to do work later to bring the rest of the building to a point where it was, in as many ways as we possibly could comparable to the work that was being done. And that notion of providing more equity in the space, advancing the space to a place where it at least resembles in terms of concept the 21st century type of approach that we're trying to take. So, uh, this is that approach, and now it's just realizing that so that we can get the rest of the building to a place that, um, approaches the innovation that happened in the other spaces, which we had the opportunity to look at that tonight, and again, it's incredible work. And thanks to the Council Rock staff for all they've done to be patient around providing these great spaces to our kids too, because that hasn't been easy either, so, thanks to all of you, appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. All right, we're gonna hear our, I'm very excited. We're gonna get our first principal reports of the year. Uh, we're at Council Rock, so it probably makes sense to start with Danielle Edmonds.
So few things that you have that are really fun.
Good evening. Excited to be here today. I have to, uh, start off by making this a little bit about me, and then I'll make it really about the students after this. Um, this is my second September starting and, uh, giving this update, and the coolest part about it is that I now know my eighth graders, sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. And I cannot tell you how many times, Yana, and I just had this conversation tonight, how many times in the last three weeks, Mrs. Paddock and Ms. Brooks and I have stopped and just said, "Look at how these students have grown. Look at the way they're taking care of each other." And, and that is what we have seen over the past few weeks, is I had a kid come up to me today and say, "Ms. Edmonds, we're not doing fists this year, we're taking care of each other." And it's like, and I looked at him and I said, "Well, you never did do fists, but I appreciate you saying that." Um, but it's really magical to see from my perspective, to see how these students have grown, um, and that just makes me super excited for what the year ahead has to bring for us, because I think everybody's in this place where they feel like this is a building that they value and they feel a responsibility to the whole and to each other. So, um, you know, I say that it's about me because I get to stand back and watch it all and feel really proud of them, but it's really about the kids and all that they've done and what they have in front of them. So I just wanted to share that because it's, it's really, really cool to see. We started off this year in August with our orientation, where our TCMS Strong eighth-grade leaders, uh, led multiple sessions for our students to help them learn about their lockers and technology and the schedule and do some, uh, team bonding and things of that nature. Uh, so it was an awesome day, lots of smiles, I think eased a lot of anxieties, both for students and definitely for parents. Uh, we had a packed house for, uh, the parent portion of orientation and, um, lots of great, uh, questions afterwards from parents and, uh, even greater conversations a week later to say, "Whew, you were right, like, it really will be okay." Um, so it was a great way to start the year, and, um, we spent the first week or so really continuing what we had done at orientation with sixth graders and our seventh and eighth graders to establish our culture, uh, reviewing the general, uh, routines and protocols of what morning arrival looks like, what our expectations are for cell phones and backpacks, um, doing a, a really, uh, intensive conversation and work around DASSA on the Safe Schools Hotline and promoting the Safe Schools Hotline, um, extensively for students. And then continuing with the challenge that we've had for our students over the past few years, which is to be involved in at least one thing. By the end of the year, you've got to be able to say that you're in a performing group or you're in a, on a sports team or you're in a club, uh, we want you to find your place, and, uh, we're super excited that we have all the clubs that we have and all of the sports activities, and we want, we want students to find that place. Um, TCMS Strong is going strong with, uh, supporting sixth graders, so they've been helping in the halls with sixth graders, but they're also pushing it into Wynn to, to help answer questions and help students navigate any anxieties that they might have. They're also, uh, this morning was a perfect example, they're also working with folks from BOSI's and, um, they're, they're working on an interrupting harmful language protocol that they're learning about. I, I may have said this before, but they'll be doing trainings with the folks from BOSI's, uh, through December, and then, uh, they're gonna turnkey those trainings with all of our students, not only our sixth graders, in Wynn classes for the second half of the year. Uh, teachers are getting trained in that as well, so really making sure that we're kind of calling out and calling in as appropriate when there's harmful language spoken in our building. And, uh, we're super excited to be continuing our homeroom Wynn connection. Students are starting and ending the day in the same family, and every Wednesday, we're working through our SEL and mindfulness, uh, activities. This year has brought with us, um, all of the beginning of the year fun. I will tell you that, uh, that was the only day that I will have worn my Aaron Rodgers jersey. I suspect that it will be worth a lot of money someday for the least worn jersey ever, um, but...
You, you've worn it longer than he did.
You are absolutely right. You're absolutely right. So Anna and I had some little bets going. Anna is the most diehard, uh, Bills fan I've ever met, and, uh, so she has, uh, become victorious, and we now have a large Bills flag hanging in the main office, not a Jets flag, I will just let you know that. But just lots of fun and smiles, pictures on the right, all of the students sharing their lunch on the first day, happy to be back. Uh, I walked around and took pictures of every table and sixth, third, eighth grade lunch, and I said, "You have to prove to your family that you're okay." Um, so they, they all had smiles, and it was a great time, and, uh, we had a great PTSA meeting with the principal, um, Director Mosher was there, Mr. Green was there, uh, Ms. Glazer, or Dr. Glazer was there, um, able to answer lots of questions for families. We worked through curriculum night, um, some good attendance and some great questions from families there. Fall sports are up and running, lots of activities. Boys, uh, boys volleyball was playing today. School pictures have happened. We had our amazing annual urban suburban ice cream social. Nobody, uh, offered any ice cream to me, but maybe next year they will. And we're already planning Washington DC. Our ODE, Outdoor Ed, is up and running. We had the first group, uh, group go out last Thursday, next group goes this Friday, and then the third group will go next, uh, Thursday. So we had great weather last week, hoping for some good weather again, um, this week coming up. So more of our students just hanging and enjoying their time with each other. Middle school, you know, is, is much about this than it is about, uh, the academics that are happening. We are so excited this year. We have had a great opportunity. I know that Council Rock is involved as well in the Fullbright Scholar Program through the U of R, and we have three, uh, educators from around the world who come and work with us and our students every single Tuesday now through December. Um, so we have, uh, you know, um, I'm trying to remember, I apologize. One of the teachers is Patricia is from Uganda. Uh, she was in today, sharing, uh, so much of, of her own culture and her own educational background with our students. It's a great opportunity, it's kinda like a win-win, you know, they're learning from us, but we are certainly gaining so much from what they're sharing with our students already. We also just secured an amazing grant from the Brighton Alumni Association to beautify our courtyard. It does not look so beautiful in this picture, um, but we secured almost $5,000 to, um, to bring in some landscaping folks to do some work in the, in this area to make it not only usable, um, for adults to, to eat lunch, but more importantly, for students, um, to, to activities out there and engage in some learning in a nice peaceful manner. So to be continued on that. Here's our Outdoor Ed. Uh, I think we had about five. Dr. McGowan, were you at the fishing section all day?
All day long.
We had, we had quite a few fish kissers, um, and I will tell you, um, Assistant Principal Brooks got a fish gill stuck in her finger, and the nurses had to, uh, do some, some minor surgery at the end of the day. So I took a picture of that, and I told her, I said, "I won't post it anywhere, but at the end of the year, we'll look at it fondly and say, 'You survived.'"
I would like to give credit though to Craig Dennison, the master fisherman, and was very good at taking fish off the hooks. I don't know if you know, it's, it gets your hands really sticky when you do that. He's very, very good at it, so...
No, thank you. I, I do, I, I visit that section, I don't, I don't live in that, that section.
The board is gonna go ice fishing, actually, this winter, and all of that, so...
Oh, really? Nice. It's a goal, it's a goal. Okay, well, I, I, you'll probably have gloves on at that point.
I do wanna point out, though, this, uh, the picture, this particular, uh, young man reminds me that there are so many kids there who have not had that opportunity before, and the squeals of joy and wonder and trying to figure it all out, but excitement over having the chance to do that is really, really cool. Which they have all throughout OD, but there's certain experiences that are just unique.
And, um, upcoming events, we're finishing up math testing tomorrow. We did ELA last week, and students will take the math map test tomorrow. We also have our club and activity fair during lunches tomorrow, so students can see the more than 30 opportunities that they have to participate in clubs. Outdoor Ed is continuing, um, Homecoming Week this year, uh, we're trying to get the middle school students to be a little more involved in the festivities, so we're gonna do some door decorating contests in alignment with the floats that the upperclassmen are creating. And we've got Red Ribbon Week and Halloween coming up, so always exciting things in the fall.
Questions for Danielle? It seems like you're off to a great start, congratulations. Uh, I'm very excited to tell you that we're gonna hear from Colleen Coggins for the first time to give us an update on French Road.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
How are you? Um, our first couple of days of school was wonderful. It actually started before the first day with, um, staff, and that was when we did popsicles with principals to start to meet families, and we had a ton of teachers and faculty come in to kick off the year. I started with that because we did it in the front of the school, just where these pictures were taken. Um, at the time of popsicles with the principal, we also did not have our playground open quite yet, but it was a great opportunity to meet, I think there were a couple hundred people there, maybe 150, 200 people that night, so it was wonderful. Uh, we started our first day of school with Mr. Rob Thomas, who came in as the interim assistant principal in front of Mrs. Wheeler, and it was wonderful also having central officer to greet the kids off the bus. So it was just a nice way to greet the kids and have a good start to the year. Um, when the teachers came in prior to the kids, I decided to do the theme of a Happy New Year. Um, new goals, new people, New Year's celebration. So we did kick the opening faculty meeting off with a New Year's celebration. We focused on collaboration, we focused on, um, community and goal-setting as a community. And the nice thing about that is, can you guys hear me okay? Um, the nice thing about this is we really worked on a couple of different projects within the faculty meeting to get people to work together, help me have a better understanding of Fraz, and learn how we're gonna learn and grow together this year. Um, we do have a very, uh, camera shy staff, so at our opening, uh, the second faculty meeting, I got group pictures of everyone, just to update that and to see all the faces, so you'll see everyone. This was about the second week of school, still smiling and not in 100-degree weather, which was great. Um, connecting with the students was another area that we were focusing on this year, and, um, if you take a look at this picture, you'll see the picture all the way to the right. We've got brand-new Promethean boards in all the classrooms, and we've been having a lot of help with, um, our technology instructional leaders on rolling out the Promethean boards. Our mental health staff has been using cards so they can stream in all of their information and presentations during Bruin time. So you see the kids over there on the right, they're doing math right there with the Promethean board, that's being led by their classroom teacher, so that's been great. Within the first three weeks of school, I've been working on learning our rhythm and setting up routines and structures and learning what those structures are as a school community. Um, also this week, I'm excited, I'm gonna start going into all the classrooms, and I'm gonna be their guest reader. I don't know if they know it's me yet, but I put out five different books for the teachers to pick from based on their needs of the kids. So I'm excited to get to know the kids so they can see me and talk in a smaller environment. Um, Mike Malloy has been wonderful with transportation. We did our bus safety last week, and you'll see right there with one of our drivers, he's empowering the kids to help with the bus safety. Great day, great weather, and the kids really did a nice job with that. Um, we've also been working on our safety procedures with Truca Moser. Um, we've been working on our lockdown drills and starting to roll out our fire safety drills as well. Um, in the upcoming weeks, we'll have more systems in place with the blue light system. Star qualities is a tradition at Fraz, um, part of the Brighton beliefs, the respect, responsibility, kindness, integrity, and self-control. Within the first two weeks, we met with all the grade levels. Um, Mr. Thomas and I went through what those look like at Fraz, what does it look like in the classroom, what does it look like in the cafeteria, what does it look like on the playground? And we really worked on a couple of different systems with them, something as simple as a high-five. How do we get our, each other quiet? How do we listen to those rules? And we talked about how those star qualities make us a good human being. And the nice thing is so many of the kids come to us from Council Rock with, so what we're trying to do this year is to really bridge those, here is to really bridge those star qualities along with the habits of mind in the classroom, so we're excited to embark on this as well. Here's the new playground. I don't know if anyone has seen the playground yet. This past Friday, we had our welcome back picnic with all of our families. We had a ton of people there, we ran out of pizza, had to get more pizza brought in. Um, the PTSA did a wonderful job putting on that welcome back picnic, and the kids are ecstatic to be on the playground. We've been learning about the new space, we've been learning about the school rules, um, they're challenging each other, you see climbing on top of the spider web structure that they have. Um, they've been just loving their time outside. Um, being out there, we've also been practicing what those rules look like and how we can help one another in those spaces. It is an inclusive space, so we've been able to have all kids enjoy that together, so thank you for putting that together for us. We also have some popular little friends at Fraz, and we've got three therapy dogs this year. Remy is new to the crew. Um, Remy and Cosmo are both the dogs of Mrs. Brightfall, and we have a Scotty with Mrs. Webster. So they make their way around the building almost on a daily basis, they take their turns being there, but they've been a wonderful addition, so if you come in, I'm sure you're gonna get some puppy cuddles, and you'll have a flock of kids coming near you. So it's really been a great start to the year. My goal is really getting to know the families, getting to know the staff, getting to know the routines and structures in the building, so we've been grateful for a positive start. Um, the month of October is gonna continue to be busy. We're going to be starting with our first PTSA meeting with myself, um, next week, and I'm hoping to get to know some more of our families. We have school pictures, we have our movie night, we have, um, our bingo upcoming, so that's exciting. I can't wait to be part of that with the kids. And then, of course, Halloween, but we're gonna get into those structures as well, so... That's it for Fraz. Lots of busy things learning on my part as well as, uh, the kids. That's it for Fraz. Lots of busy things learning on my part as well as the kids, for sure.
Questions for Colleen? Two quick comments. One, welcome. We're so happy you're here. We're so happy you're leading our kids in that school. We hope you have a lot of fun. So that's important. Second, a couple of us up here live sort of in the neighborhood. Once that playground opened, I could be driving by in the evening on a Saturday or a Sunday or the morning, that playground is in full use. So it's absolutely a school asset, but it's also by sort of a de facto community asset. And it is getting overly enjoyed. And I mean that in a positive sense. So thanks to John Novelli and Lou for helping to get that done just in the nick of time for the start of school. But it seems like you're off to a great start. Congratulations.
Great job, Colleen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Illustrative of the way that so many people help out, for some strange reason, Tom Hall decided to travel this weekend and get COVID. So Teresa, Teresa Moser is gonna pinch hit for him on top of her security role.
Thank goodness.
He was a little under the weather at the same time the previous year. So Tom was super proud of this picture. He has a little bad bag ready to go on the first day of school. Nothing better than a Bruin with him. In all seriousness, he just loved the fact that he caught a rainbow over the American flag in front of the school building. So he definitely wanted that shared. So proud of our Bruin this year. We were fortunate enough to get several other students to try out and wanna become the Bruin, which has enabled us to have the Bruin show up at multiple events. Here are the Bruins with the girls' swimming team. And then a... There we go. And then the Bruin, a different Bruin showed up at the boys soccer team, getting the crowd going. We're just super excited about the fact that I think we are up to four Bruins now. And we're being able to cover a lot more events with the Bruin, but we're also hoping that it'll expand into the other buildings, the elementary schools, for some of their spirit times or special activities that they have as well. Everybody loves the Bruin for sure. Ninth grade new student orientation was a super success. A lot of kudos goes out to the Bonadonnas and our student link leaders. They really put in a lot of time and training to make this an exciting special event, full of activities for the students. They spent a lot of time on community and getting new students to the high school, ninth graders to the high school, excited about coming and joining the high school family. In addition to, after all, the activities showing around, showing their lockers, talking to them about the ins and outs. And then making sure that they're each connected to at least two link leaders. So new students to the high school or incoming ninth graders already know some upperclassmen that they can turn to if they have questions. We also have, I think our freshman class is about 272 students. The exciting thing about this is you'll see a lot of pink in the crowd. There's been a lot around the movie Barbie. But I think that was the original reason why they went with pink for the t-shirts, but they give a pink t-shirt to each of the freshmen. And ironically, the classes have talked about doing a pink out during October homecoming in support of breast cancer awareness. And so now all of our new students and all of our freshmen will already have a pink shirt to join in the fun. So that's pretty exciting too. Our annual faculty and staff picture, I believe this year, we have roughly 17 new staff at the high school. So a lot of new faces and many returning faces there. The first week at the high school, there was an extended homeroom. You can see the list of topics that we're covering. A lot of the ones that Danielle talked about for TCMS, hitting those very important ones regarding like DAS, vaping, the safe schools hotline. So our teachers took this on as a task. What they did is in extended homerooms, all of our homeroom teachers spent time first, running community circles within the classroom, helping their homeroom classes get bonded together and get to know each other. And then dispersed throughout that during the entire week, covering all these topics and expectations and school rules. And you know, the ins and outs of open campus and cell phone policy as well. This is our second year at the high school with our new cell phone policy. It really does seem to be working well. Again, we're pretty proud of following the research there, knowing that statistically, it shows that students without their cell phone will engage in taking about 65% more notes. The attention span and engagement improves. And then overall, their academics improve as well. And so here's the actual policy. At the high school, essentially, when you're in a classroom, there's no cell phone use and it needs to be out of sight. Research shows even sitting on your desk is a distraction, even if you're not utilizing it. And when I first saw the site, I thought, "Oh my goodness, I have no idea what I'm gonna talk about." But I did figure it out. So the first week of school, Dr. Hall was doing quite a few presentations on the morning show, just important things that he wanted to cover with the students. And he was concerned that students not, they might not pay close attention to him speaking on the morning show. So he decided to make it a game. And the game was figure out what his favorite hat was. He wore 18 hats in the first week of school across the morning show. And our students really dove in trying to figure it out. Some were trying to time how long he wore each hat to see if that made a difference. Some were trying to figure out if he wore it a certain way, did that mean it was his favorite? Any homeroom that had the right answer, their name ironically was put into a hat. And then the winners were drawn out. And they received, that homeroom received donuts and bagels. Pretty excited about our welcome wagon that wasn't planned by anybody else except these students and potentially their advisors. So here we have on the first day, our welcome wagon is our acapella groups and our Friends of Rachel. They showed up on the first day to welcome everybody. They were handing out lollipops and encouraging all students to join Friends of Rachel for our acapella group. And you know, it's just super exciting and welcoming, especially on the first day of school. Especially if you're brand new to the district or you know, you're incoming freshman, just to see people welcoming you, giving you a lollipop and saying, "Hey, we'd love to have you a part of our group. Think about it." So we're pretty excited about that. We have some pretty amazing kids at the high school, as you all know, well, in the district. New family night. Again, kudos goes out to first Jeff Green and Deanna Spagnolia for creating such a wonderful event where many families showed up. You know, but for us, the high school, we're pretty proud of our Friends of Rachel group advisor Lance Mitchell. They volunteered their time to come here and do face painting with our younger kids and students and keep them busy. And just really engaged them and they played games with them. And the students seemed pretty excited here. As you can see, many of them got their faces painted as well. So lots of fun there. Great group of students that we have there as well. College Tuesdays are back up and running. Every Tuesday from three to five, students that need any type of assistance with college applications or the college process can come to the high school from three to five. We have two counselors there every Tuesday. And they just sit and they'll work with students one-on-one or in small groups, as you can see here. We have Travis Figaroa and Courtney Stern, two of our counselors, and one of our therapy dogs there, Delilah, working with students to help them through that college application process. Ms. Kendrick, our Algebra II teacher, went to a professional development this summer that was focused on 100% student engagement. And so here, we captured some of her strategies that she was implementing in her classroom. Through that PD, she learned that having students standing most of the period, up and moving around, and having access to movable whiteboards was improving the level of engagement and the level of active participation, like students actually sharing ideas or recording ideas. And so this is just some of our professional development in action and teachers, you know, taking that step to try something new in the classroom. And it seems to be really working in this particular classroom. We were very fortunate that Monroe Community College offered to bring their THORS lab, mobile photonics lab. I think it was last week they came to the high school for a day and they invited all of our physics classes to tour their mobile lab. Throughout the tour, students could learn all about photonics, careers that are manifesting out of the degrees that students can go into with photonics and the jobs. They showed some pretty cool experiments and labs within the actual lab as students were walking through. And then they just talked about how the field was really expanding for photonics itself. And so trying to kind of engage students in exploring that as a college and potentially career opportunity. And then just a little nice touch, because you could only have so many students in the labs at a time, they put on a little cornhole there so students could play cornhole while they were waiting to tour the labs. So I'm sure that was a highlight as well.
Can I just make a quick comment about that?
Sure.
That lab came to us thanks to Dr. Alexis Vogt, who's a parent in the district and a professor at MCC in optics. And you know, was that, we're the only high school on the East Coast that will have had that lab come through. They were looking for a place to bring it. And Dr. Vogt is obviously a big Brighton supporter and booster, a brilliant mind herself and leader in the field as a matter of fact. And that MCC has one of the unique programs as part of the country around optics and photonics. So really pretty impressive stuff. Our kid's got a very unique opportunity. So thanks for sharing that.
Pretty awesome, yeah. Always talking about safety and security, so just some updates at the high school. The New York State Emergency Response Shell Card, I know I talked about that at a previous board meeting. We've adopted that across the district and our emergency responses will be going to automated responses. It's almost fully implemented at the high school, which is why we put it up there. But it is working its way across TCMS and then eventually down to all the elementary buildings so that we have a consistent automated emergency response across the board with some minor tweaks. The little arrow there is pointing to the vape detectors. We have put some vape detectors to trial in the high school. They are, we have had some success cutting down on some vapors, catching up to them. So we can get them some assistance that they need and some counseling around the negative effects of vaping as they're setting off our sensors. And then lastly, we've added some stop signs in the parking lot at the high school to make it a little bit safer. And thank you so much to Rob Luce. He put in, I think, three or four speed, much needed speed bumps in our parking lot to show, to slow down some of our drivers that have a lead foot. And so I'm certainly looking forward to those slower speeds. Upcoming on October 4th is our PSAT. I believe it was probably about seven years ago that Dr. McGowan suggested or encouraged or said, "Let's do this," one of those ways. But that to give the PSAT during the week as opposed to Saturdays in an effort to increase the participation of students taking the exam. As you can see right there, over the years, just moving it from a Saturday to during the week, it's moved the percentage from 60 to 65% of students taking the exam to 90 to 95%. And this year in particular, this is gonna be the first time the PSAT is a digital exam. It wasn't digital before. So this is gonna be something all brand new this year. But that's coming up on October 4th.
Teresa, just if people are wondering about that, one, Ashley Edwards has done a really great job transitioning us to the electronic, which has been a huge lift. Kids get their first pieces of mail from colleges based on PSAT. And there are study after study after study that shows if you get interest from a school, you are much more likely to pursue that as an option than if you don't get that piece of mail. For people that may not be thinking about that, any kind of opportunity, right? Any kind of two-year, four-year, whatever it may be, it's really important to get on the list and start to see interest. And if you maybe weren't previously thinking that that was an option for you and you get a letter from somebody that says, "Hey, we'd like you to think about us", you tend to then jump on that differently. And we know that not all kids will access it if it's on the weekend due to transportation, other barriers, the option of it. But if it's in school. So our staff's done a really nice job. And you know, Teresa, when she was at the high school in her previous position, and Tom, of course, made this happen as well. It's a big lift and it's time away from class. But it's important to point out why it's valuable time away from class. It serves a big purpose. So thanks Teresa.
So we do love our therapy dogs at the high school. I think I have about 10 slides with just dogs on them. It makes me think of back when we used to welcome new staff to the high school and we read all these things about them, like likes to take long walks on the beach and things like that. So I'm gonna kinda whip through these a little bit quicker. We do have eight dogs. I'm a little partial to this one of course. He was the first therapy dog for the district. But we have Lily, Josie, Delilah, Annie, Big Winnie, Little Winnie. And our newest dog is Sebastian. So there we have it all. They're wonderful. The kids love them. And it's definitely something that Dr. Hall in particular is very proud of, getting that started at the high school. And it's just been really great. Upcoming activities, we have a ton. So today, our Israeli exchange visitors just arrived today. They're staying through October 8th, I believe. And then the very next day, our Spanish exchange visitors are arriving. I think the last time we had a Spanish exchange was like the fall of 1999. And so thank you so much to Rachel Rivera, Suzanne Crowley for getting that up and running. They found a school to partner with. And so this will be the first time that exchange has happened, you know, since 99. So that's a pretty great thing. And there are tons of activities throughout October, including homecoming, which is an amazing community event. And then just topping it off with the end of October where we go into our musical season with Urantown. Any questions?
Just a couple of quick things. One, since I go to the public market from time to time, the front of the high school, so not out to Rob Luce and John and Lou, the front of the high school looks fantastic. It was a lot of work in getting that done. It gets a lot of traffic, obviously, all weekend, on the weekends, but the front of the high school looks absolutely fantastic. Thank you, Teresa, for pinch hitting. You did a, I don't think Tom could have done it any better. So you did a great job there. I'd also note in the presentations that everyone is mentioning that they're working with you on the security. And this heightened focus for us that you're leading on the safety and security of our students and our staff and our community is greatly appreciated. So thank you for taking on that challenge. And we'll be interested in getting updates from you throughout the rest of the year.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm very excited to be taking on that challenge for sure. It's been great to work with all the building principals. You know, they've been amazing. And the head custodians, Rob, everybody's been amazing. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our host. Our host. Let's find out what's going on at Council Rock.
Thank you. I just wanted to say what a great job Teresa did. And we're gonna just need to take her out of the voodoo spell of Dr. Hall. Because she keeps saying "our, our, our" and she can't help it, I know. I know, he's ingrained it in her. But great job, Teresa. Glad to have you. We also caught a rainbow here at Council Rock. It was probably the same rainbow that Dr. Hall caught. But we've had an amazing first few days. So our PTSA has been incredible in supporting us as we got routines started. That middle picture, we've started over the last few years having parents come and volunteer to help get kids where they need to go. And they took it upon themselves. They were the bus loop crew. And they made yellow t-shirts. And the kids knew to go to the people in yellow. It was really great. And our kids are just doing a fantastic job getting into the building, which seems like a small feat. But when you have 700 kids get off the bus at the same time who don't necessarily know exactly where they're going, it was, it's intense. I'm always sweaty after the first day. And then the second day, they all go where they need to go because they learn really quickly. So. Our curriculum nights, we've had our kindergarten curriculum night, our first and our second grade curriculum nights are tomorrow. But we did something a little differently. And I know you'll be hugely surprised, Board, that it involved habits of mind. But we got our families thinking about habits of mind a little bit differently. That's one of our goals for habits of mind is we've done a really great job here. I talk about it all the time. But really getting it into the hands of parents to understand what we're doing here. And then trying to help them also know how this could support them in their parenting at home. And they can support the language. So this is families getting together and doing the puzzle and understanding what the habits are. They were so engaged. It was great. I didn't have to talk as much. They didn't have to... grade in all the different languages. My favorite is outside of Mrs. Files, she had it made, welcome to first grade, where would you rather be than right here, right now, which of course mimics the Bills, which we are celebrating, you know, for the last few weeks. So really looking at that and then establishing routines and expectations across the board. So in the bottom corner is a real grainy picture of me, starting with our second graders who are starting to do the announcements with me in the morning, but then all around conversations about how to be a class family, how to build that community, how to respect each other, what the expectations for the teacher are. But I love it because the kids are involved in creating those expectations and sharing what they need from their classmates and from their teacher and incorporating that into the routines and expectations. And then connecting and learning about each other. We've done a lot of work around getting to know each other, getting to know who's in their class, understanding who they are, what makes them who they are, what makes them unique, but also what brings them together. So teachers have done that in a variety of ways and I love it. We are each unique and beautiful, but together we are a masterpiece and working together collaboratively. So our social emotional learning has kicked off already, so if you don't remember, we are second step is our curriculum that we are using and our counselors do an amazing job integrating that. And this year, in that picture, you can see that's Dana Peterson who works with our first graders. What they've done is they've built in one time per cycle to visit every classroom for a whole group lesson. And then the very next day, they go back and they work with a small group of kids. And that can be based on teacher recommendation, it can be based on need, but really to follow up and connect to that whole group lesson and give them a chance to practice. So our counselors are out and in classrooms more than they ever have been and it's really working well so far. So if you didn't hear, Pete the Cat and the Gingerbread escaped here at Council Rock. Our kindergartners were all over this building, learning where places were. Pete and the Gingerbread really visited some key places. They visited the main office, they visited the nurse's office, they visited the playground. So it was, I don't know, it worked out really well. They did find both of them and apparently the kindergartners who found the Gingerbread man got to eat some of his friends. Not sure how that goes, but... And Pete the Cat delivered some really great messages about what the year is gonna be like. So it was really great to see the kindergartners working together, working with their teachers, kind of traveling all over the school in those first couple of days to get oriented in a really cool way. We've got lots of things coming up, as I said, this Wednesday and Thursday, first and second grade are having their curriculum nights. This Fri... Or next Friday, no school. The teachers will be hard at work and staff will be hard at work during a lot of learning and professional development, but no students that day, no school on Monday. We've got picture days coming up. The PTSA movie night might be on hold. They're doing some logistical work about copyrights, so hold on that for a second. We're really excited to have an author visit. I'll share more about that in October, coming to us early in... Or in October. And then also coincides with Red Ribbon Week, which will focus on kindness and connect directly with the author visit. So we are very excited. Any questions for me?
No questions. I'll note to you that Ms. Bertino and I were walking in tonight for the meeting and we both just commented on how great the school looks, how welcoming it is, lots of colors, lots of shapes, just very proud of the work that was done to create this environment. You were certainly part of that, so just really, really cool to walk in here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions from the rest of the board, I'm sorry. Good? Okay. Couple of items on the consent agenda. First, fundraising activities. Brighton Field Hockey Booster Club is doing a fundraiser at Chipotle on November 5th. And the Brighton JV and varsity women's swim and dive team, looks like they're running the concession stand from September through November. Also note a gift, a gift from Mrs. Diana Herman to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of a Yamaha YPT 220 keyboard to the 12 Corners Middle School Vocal Department. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Moved by Eleanor, seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Two quick notes before I call for adjournment. One, recognition for Karen Hatch. She's agreed to be our voting delegate for the New York State School Board Association.
Yay!
It requires a couple of training sessions and then she'll be representing us. We thank her for her time for that. Also, I'll note that we got here tonight, we got a nice tour, we showed up, we sat down, our chairs were here, our tables were here, and then everything just appeared. So I thank the buildings and the facilities folks who set everything up and I'll also like to thank Dan back over there, Dan Goldman back over there, and Seth behind that camera, Bill behind this camera, and Mike way over my shoulder who got this all set up so we could just walk in and start going. Round of applause for that. Thank you very much. Anything else for the good of you or...
Just one thing. There are districts across the state who are thinking today and every day about students and staff in Farmingdale who were involved in a terrible bus accident. Of course, there were fatalities involved, several injuries in kids and staff members continue to be treated in hospitals in that part of the state, so we just join them certainly in thinking about what they're going through and in support and solidarity. I just ask everybody to keep them in their thoughts and prayers, however they do that and hold that sacred. So thanks.
Thank you. Incredibly difficult situation, the pictures were awful, so thank you for bringing that up. Other comments? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.